Welcome to the January 15th meeting of the zoning front end on the Board of Appeals. We'll welcome our newest member, Tim Ekinoplin, who joins us, hopefully for a long spell. Appreciate you being here and welcome to board.
Thank you.
Let's see, Chris, did you want to sing the National Anthem? Will we start?
Yes.
No?
Me and Kim will do that.
Okay, we'll start with minutes of the last meeting. By the way, my name's Dave Tobias. I'm substituting, I'm sure, very unfavorably for our fearless leader Scott Bergen, who is out tonight, hopefully back in February. Our next meeting is February 19th at 7:00 PM. Our meetings have moved from 7:30 until December of last year and now 7:00 PM every night going forward. So, did everyone have a chance to look over the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, Tim?
Since I wasn't with me.
Okay, fair enough. But usually you find typos anyway.
Well...
Not this time.
Not this time.
Okay. Motion to accept minutes of the Reindbeck Zoning Board Appeals Minutes, December 18th, 2019?
Second.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes accepted. And we'll now go on to our newest business, case number 994. Ms. Whitman, Catherine Whitman, I believe, if you want to... I think you know how this works, so you've been here before.
Yes, I have.
So step up to the mic and tell us who you are and what you've got.
Hi, I'm Catherine Whitman and I'm here for my own residence at 16 Old Coast Road. Is everyone familiar with the location? So, I'm requesting a variance at the front of the building. Three foot nine feet, 3.9 feet by 13 feet is the structure that would be new. And the house is already non-compliant on the front yard setback, so it's increasing the non-compliance. So... This is the 57-foot front yard setback that would result after the three-foot-nine addition. And it's for 13 feet wide. And it's pretty simple. I can show you a rendering of what it is in three dimensions. So, this is the main part and then the second story on an existing ranch.
Do we have those?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're moving from 60.8 feet so that your resulting front would be 57 feet from the road?
Right.
Variance of 93 feet, okay. And that's the only variance in?
Yes.
I want to point out to the board members that this property is located in the RA-10 zone. So the minimum lot size for the zone right now is 10 acres. This parcel is .38 acres, so it's very, very small. I mean, it's almost set... If you were implied with the setback, you wouldn't be able to do it because it'd push you almost all the way. I think it's 175 and 198 from the front to the back of the lot. So it's a much, much smaller lot than was contemplated.
Yep.
And so Catherine, looking at this, looking at the top picture of the building, the new addition is going to go on this side?
Well, on the top picture, the front door is center and it's coming out further. Coming towards us would be the addition.
Oh, it's just the roof line on it. It's the line where we live and look like.
Well, this is the gable roof and it's... You're looking at that corner, so it's the same ranch in the part that's white.
Yeah.
So you're doing a lot of renovations and the only thing you can bear is that it come out, whatever it is through 93?
The new part is going up and over the existing ranch.
And because this property is on a scenic road, the site plan approval is also going to be required.
So, questions?
We do have one question. Where is this located? Is this right as you bear right off of Mount Wesson Road?
When you leave Route 9, go diagonally past the hospital and you cross over the small bridge.
Yeah, can you bring up Google Maps?
Two houses pass the bridge on the right.
These are just some views I got from the door. I'll see if I need to add any more. But this is just kind of... Think this is the house?
Yeah. It's before what you think of as Old Coast Road.
Right.
Just past 10.
Any other questions while we're waiting for the map?
I noticed there were trees on the front of the property there. Are they staying or are they being taken down?
We already have new trees because there were trees with tall trunks that weren't blocking the view as much. So we have evergreen building there.
The deciduous trees that are available stay there. You don't have to take any trees out for the renovation?
No.
So, this is looking north. This is... Sorry. This is the woods. This would be Route 9 over here and this is... Here's the split.
One, Tim, hold it close. So...
So then the bridge was just...
Catherine, it's okay if we want one member to a site visit at some point?
Sure.
Any volunteers about taking this project that's assigned? Tim, you up for this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would request that if you could, before the next hearing, if you could get ahold of the map with, you know, the graphic map, not a parcel map, just show the footprint of a couple of whatever buildings are around.
There's a site plan.
Yeah, there's a site plan and a survey.
Showing anything outside your property?
This is what was submitted.
Yeah, I have that. I have that.
And that shows the whole parcel?
Yeah, but... If we can find something left, go sending a surveyor out there. It just shows the outline of the adjacent properties and/or buildings, ideally both. But I don't think...
Do you want the adjoining... Something that shows the adjoining properties?
Yeah, I'm really more interested in buildings available. I don't know the neighborhood that well and I will go look at it, but...
So you're looking for the tax map showing the neighborhood around this parcel?
If there's nothing else, yes. I mean, if your surveyor went any further...
It looks like that's probably the best site map. Anything outside of that, I think we could go to tax map.
Maybe the parcel act, that's the...
Yeah, that's just getting the tax part.
There's a little screenshot. You probably want something bigger, Tim, but there's a little screenshot of the parcel act just there and...
Okay, any other requests for information? We've... Well, we'll make a motion to accept the application subject to, I guess, an additional map showing the tax parcels in the neighborhood. Tim, second for that? All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll schedule the public hearing for... For 19th? I guess I need to make a motion to classify this as under seeker as Section 617.5C16?
Yep, which is a type two action.
You got a second for that? Okay, thanks Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
And so moved.
And you should also refer it up to... So this one gets referred up to the Reindbeck Planning Board. It is in the LWRC, so it gets referred up to the WAC and it's also on designated scenic road, so CAV, which goes to... They're the same.
Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
See you next month. Okay, we now have our building and Darren is here for a record, two cases in a row. So, this is public hearing on case number 94, 68229. I'm sorry, I think we need a motion to open the public hearing. I'll make that motion.
That's second.
Thank you Catherine. So moved. Any objections? Okay, so we're Darren.
Thank you. And we'll just note for the record that there's no being ten minutes to hear this evening. But we can do a present objection.
Or did that last month?
Well, you can be brief.
Perfect, I love that. So maybe we just go to the site one there. Yeah, they give a fair amount of background last month, but just very, very quickly. 6822 Route 9, the former Costco oil terminal site, one parcel south of Pet Country on Route 9 on the northbound side. And what we are here tonight to talk about is a sign which we're proposing in front of the existing building there. Our actual proposal to the planning board is for conversion of this building, which is about 990 square feet. The addition of about 660 square feet to it and back to conversion. Conversion from an accessory to an oil terminal to a professional office building. So a very similar use, but just a different designation. And the reason we want to put the sign in front of the building is hopefully pretty obvious, just for visibility purposes. And we want the sign to be notifying people of our business being in that location. And that is the most and only real visible spot that relates to the building at that point. The issue is, of course, that there's in the code, a 20-foot required setback from the property line. And that location will put it four feet from the property line. The building itself is nine feet from the property line, so even building is not compliant with that sign ordinance out of Minnesota. It's a 12-square-foot sign. It is 12 square feet on both sides, which we did clarify is allowable per the code. The code doesn't specifically mention it, but I clarified with the zoning administrator that it is allowed on both sides of the sign. And then if we want to go through it, there was a comment last week or last month about some of the signs up and down Route 9. And I did submit a few pictures of some of the adjacent signs, all of which appear to be, well, I can measure them. We've measured them from the edge of pavement. We don't know the exact location of the property line on those. But the one that is closest to the road is Phantom Gardner, which is about 10 and a half feet from the roadway. That's Aster Square.
Do you have any code through? I'm sorry.
I can go... As you flip through, I can tell you where the signs are. So Aster Square from the roadway is 18 feet seven, so that does appear to meet the 20-foot. Or it doesn't appear to actually meet the 20-foot setback because we would assume that the property line extends past the side of the roadway. Co., which is in the village, is 13.9 from the edge of the roadway. Haven Spa, this is just brought in. We don't have a measurement on this, but there was some conversation about what the light would look like on top of the sign last month. So that, in a different color, is essentially the light that we're proposing, a very streamlined line.
Streamlined. Full cut off.
Was that a full cut off? So there's no uplighting and then at night it illuminates the bulk of the sign, but it sort of has a progressively lower beam as it gets down the sign. So it creates this nice effect on the sign. We're proposing something very similar. In fact, if you turn that sign on its side, it's essentially our sign extending. Pet Country, our next-door neighbor, 12 feet from the edge of pavement. And Phantom Gardner, as I said before, 10 feet 5 inches from the edge of pavement. If we measure our proposed sign from the edge of pavement, by the way, it's about 14 feet. So we're somewhere in the mix with all of those other signs on Route 9 for precedent's sake. We realize a couple of them are in the village, but just for continuity, we have to go on Route 9 and drop them in.
You happen to have those distances written down somewhere?
They were on the email that I submitted, a person with the subject lines, so I can certainly email them individually. And I can keep going if there's any questions.
Questions so far?
Yeah. Did Costco have a sign up there?
They did, which was... It is shown on the plan. If we go back to the site plan, the green one, I'll show you where it is. Costco sign was sort of way off here on the edge of the property, so a little bit further away on a pole within the sign home, you know, out towards the roadway. And we sort of felt this is a less desirable location for a sign. You know, they used this whole close to 2.4 acre parcel for their operations, so they had, you know, tanks and trucks and all kinds of things. Whereas we're, you know, all the way over here on the other end of the property, so, you know, a sign here sort of feels like, you know...
I'm not quite sure where is the sign actually?
The sign is right here, proposed sign. So it's just a ground sign at the corner of our building. And what happens is you get visibilities in both directions at that sign. And you get a chance to see the sign as you're about to pass the building. They notify you to turn in and as you head in this direction, you can see it and make your turn. Or actually continue in the second driveway if you happen to miss it.
So... So in your picture, you have, it looks like two posts and they follow?
Those posts are not the signs. Those were just a little banner that said, "Let go, open house" or something like that, so...
So the rendering shows where it would be?
The rendering shows where, accurately where it would be, above the posts.
Without a variance?
I'm sorry?
Without a variance?
The rendering, I'm not sure which one you're looking at, just to... We probably have a slide, but to be interested. So that shows it with a variance? Yeah, that is where it's proposed.
Do you have similar renders without the variance?
I don't, just because it would be in the building or in the parking lot somewhere. So if we go back to the site plan just for a second, you know, without a variance, it would be somewhere back here or somewhere back here, you know, like mid-building or next to building. So it would be blocked by the building from one direction to another.
But I mean, just for argument's sake, why didn't you just have that?
So you want the rendering as per code?
Yeah, it's not necessarily scheming to get that rendered, you know, that configuration, but I think it'd be...
Sure, we can just make that.
It would show this good sense of what you have proposed.
All right, to be clear, the rendering submitted is with a variance.
How close was... I'm sorry, but how close was the Costco sign to the road?
I don't know from the road. Our proposed sign is about 14 feet. They were probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about 20, just a little bit further back. And the four foot from property line is that survey, right? It is a survey. So we've gone back and forth a few times between road and property line. We're actually much closer to the property line, just to be clear. But it is a survey property line of our measurement, the four feet line, so it's sign, property line, road there. If I'm working from the road, so if we go with the roadway, property line, then four feet, sign. And then if you went to nine feet, that would be edge of the building.
And the way that the sign regulation is worded is that it's 20 feet from any property.
And then just a couple of other highlights of the plan, just to be brief. It is essentially Brownfields redevelopment site, former oil terminal that has been cleaned up under DDC oversight. So reuse of that site. All the contamination's been removed from the site prior to our ownership. Our proposal before the planning board actually contemplates removing about a half acre of additional asphalt from the site. Some has already been removed. And about 450 linear feet of chain link fence, most of which has barbed wire on the top of it. So the intent here is to clean this up and make it a site that truly feels like something worthy of a professional office with landscaping, a lot less macadam, no chain link fence, no rusty fences out there. And to put a sign there to direct people to the business. And we have checked the sign in terms of site distances and you have over 1,500 feet in the direction. So there's no site distance issue coming out of the driveway.
And I know it's supposed to raise up the last meeting. Is this not going to be illuminated all night or then what?
No. Yeah, around 10:00 PM, so just a little bit longer than our hours, so people driving by can...
Do you know if the other signs around there are, how long they're lit for or...
It's a good question. I don't know that I paid that much attention to it.
I don't believe it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. But the intention would be, you know, this time of year it gets dark about 5:00. You know, we typically can be in the office until 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night, so you can call it 10:00 PM or something like that would be a good cutoff time. Any other questions? I don't think we need permission to do site visits on this one.
Anyone?
Catherine, is the sign to you? You're good with it?
Yeah. If I have any questions, I'll send you the news.
Okay, yeah, I know you took a look at it this weekend.
Yeah.
Very diligently, planning it. Okay, so the public hearing will continue to next week, I'm sorry, next month?
Is there a... Do you want to continue the public?
No, I'm sorry, we can close it if...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think Tim asked for a map, but I don't think that...
Subject to, okay.
Well, I don't, I mean, do you think the map will do... Would you like to leave the public hearing open, Tim, until you see the map?
I don't see a reason to leave it open because the applicant can submit. The public hearing doesn't have to be open for the applicant to put material into the record. It's only for the public, so I think it's fine to close the public hearing tonight. I don't know how, you know, you can get the map in pretty quickly.
Yeah, I'm just going to slide this.
Yeah, then you can get in touch.
Tim, were we talking about...
I'm sorry, Tim Allenberg. You mentioned that you wanted to see a rendering of where the sign would be located.
But that a map?
Procode.
Yes, okay, that's my... Sorry.
So we were just wondering if it was okay if we closed the public hearing?
I think you can close the public hearing and just progress comparable, you know, take the same map and...
Yeah, I'll just submit them side by side.
That's right.
Okay, so resolution to close the public hearing tonight? Proposed, seconded by Catherine. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll plan to see this next month, February 19th, and hopefully get that rendering in the next couple of weeks.
Should have a... The planning would be having a decision that next month's meeting?
Oh, you could do that. You don't have to be here for that, but we're probably going to present the rendering.
We could just get the rendering to Chris. Chris will circulate it.
So that's just something you would just look at on paper and not necessarily air it?
Yeah, I would think if we have any questions, we can let you know and then you can come in.
Yeah, and we have, we'll have 62 days from today, so we could theoretically do it in March, but I think this is probably a fair, we'll sort of pull it. Pull it up next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Whole business, so we have now... Case number 993, Antler, represented again by Art Villain, at 41 yards from the road. I had distributed a draft resolution for folks to look over. We had a couple of corrections and edits. And those were made. We sent that out, wondering if anyone has other commentary or inputs, questions, opinions?
Dave, did you want Tim to talk a little bit about our conversations with the planning board?
We haven't heard. Sure, thank you.
So there was a question... Well, there was two questions that were raised. Dave had asked about the wetlands, because the wetlands were... There's some federal wetlands on the property and there was some concern that the building was within setback. So the wetlands on the property are federal wetlands, which don't have any buffer that's required by the Army Corps of Engineers. But the town of Reindbeck has wetlands regulations, which include a 100-foot buffer. So the applicant will be going to the planning board for a wetlands permit. So my suggestion is that we just defer to the planning board's review regarding the wetlands on the property. And then there was another question that was raised as to the number of variances that are required. The CEO's determination letter just cited one variance that was required, which was for the aggregate square footage of the accessory structures. And upon review of the zoning law, typically you're only supposed to have three accessory structures on a residential site. But when the site has more than 10 acres, which in case this one has 18 acres, you can actually permissively cite more accessory structures with a special use permit from the planning board. So in this case, a variance is not required for the number of accessory structures. And you'll just have to go to the planning board for a special use permit. Would you have to go anyway for an accessory dwelling unit?
Correct, and the well is permitted.
And the wetlands permit?
Not all of the structures.
Just the pool house?
So the garage is not part of that federal western, to be clear, because our intent... Just to be full disclosure, our intent is to submit a building permit for the three-car garage and then go to the planning board for the approval for the pool and pool house after that point. Just to break the two apart in sequence, because the pool house requires also septic approval from accounting. So to not hold up the garage construction, wait for the counter-septic approval. We chose to come here first and then the planning board second.
So my recommendation is to just make sure that the variance, just branch the one variance that's required. And then it's just conditioned on getting all of the necessary approvals from the planning board and the Department of Health.
The 10-acre clause, I didn't see that in the code, because I know there's a density clause. When I originally had my pre-application conference with the planning board, the assumption at that time was, oh wow, you're, it's okay because you have more than the required, you have more than twice the required acreage in the zone. But then after further review, it was not applicable to the RC5 zone. But then it sounds like there's another provision later in the code, which is not that one.
Right, if you look at 125, 27A7, there's the last sentence, which says... which says if you, if the residential lot exceeds ten acres, you can get another, you can get additional built, accessory structures.
I got you.
Applying to the...
Okay, so they weren't very tracked, but they just pulled the right, the wrong thing, and missed the one that would apply.
Yes. But it doesn't really change the application of the project, it's just one less variance that's required, and I think Chris has issued the...
Chris, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I'm...
Other discussion on this one? Okay, I think we can leave the resolution at this point, I'll try to do that efficiently. Resolution of the town of Rhinebeck zoning board appeals to the matter of variance application of Antner, Z B A case number nine-nine-three. Whereas background applicant, the applicants are Barry and Michelle Antner, referred to here after as the applicant, who submitted an application to construct a three-car garage of one thousand thirty-two feet and a one-bedroom accessory dwelling combined with a pool cabana, totaling nine hundred square feet. The subject application requests for variance, that should be singular variance, results from a determination letter from the town of Rhinebeck zoning enforcement officer dated August sixteenth, twenty nineteen. This appeal, number two, this appeal involves property located at forty-one Violet Hill Road, Rhinebeck, New York, which bears tax parcel number one-three-five-oh-eight-nine-dash-six-two-seven-zero-dash-zero-zero-dash-one-nine-three-three-seven-six. Hatton's property is eighteen acres in size and located in the RC five zoning district. The owner is represented by Darren Dividovich of the Art Building, Ellis Seane, with full as fore. The applicant proposes to construct a detached three-car garage and detached one-bedroom pool cabana to be served by a new septic field and source water well. The main residence will continue to be served by its own existing septic field and source water well. Number five, zoning enforcement officer issued a review of the applicant's building permit application on August sixteenth, twenty nineteen, identifying one area of variance that would be necessary to approve the application for an additional two thousand three hundred forty-five square feet of roof structure footprint beyond the maximum additional allowed of fifteen hundred square feet under section one-twenty-five, twenty-seven, A four of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. The applicant will also require site plan special use permit and a wetland permit from the town of Rhinebeck planning board for construction of the proposed accessory dwelling unit. Time limit of appeal, section six, the applicant filed an appeal with this board on October eighth, twenty nineteen, and has paid the records at fee. Appeal was filed within sixty days of the date of the CEO's decision, and the application's therefore time was required by section one-twenty-five dash one-twenty-five B of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. Seven, the applicant provided the Z B A with documentation on November twentieth, twenty nineteen, on which state the Z B A deemed the application complete, subject to submission of the final floor plans, and accepted for review. Floor plans were submitted on December ninth, twenty nineteen, and additional site plans were submitted on December sixteenth, twenty nineteen. Section eight, after accepting this application, we determine that this matter should be classified as type-two action under the Sustained environmental quality review act of SECRE because the proposed, the proposal involves construction expansion or replacement of a minor accessory pertinent residential structures, section C N Y C R R, section six seventeen-point-five C twelve. No further environmental reviews required pursuant to SECRE. Section nine, referrals and responses, town of Rhinebeck's planning board is required by section one-twenty-five dash one-twenty-five B of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This application was referred to the town, to the town planning board, and the town planning board responded on December twentieth, twenty nineteen, finding that the request of variance raises no significant planning or environmental concerns. The Z B A determined that no referrals were required to the Dutch County Planning Department pursuant to section two-three-nine M of the New York State General Municipal Law, or section one-twenty-five dash one-twenty-five B of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law, nor to the town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board pursuant to chapter nine, sections nine-five A one, nine-five A eight A, and nine-six A of the town of Rhinebeck Town Code, nor to the town of Rhinebeck Order for Advisory Committee pursuant to chapter one-eighteen of the town of Rhinebeck Town Code, parentheses, order for consistency review, because no criteria for such referrals will matter. Section ten, site visit on January eleventh, twenty twenty, Z B A members Dave Tobias, Catherine Clark, visited the subject property and surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand site conditions, property characteristics, settings, sound, surrounding environment, and character of the neighborhood. Purpose of the site visit was to observe the property and the surrounding area to inform board members to support decision made herein. Site visit was conducted solely to gather information, and no business or deliberations were conducted during the site visit. Section eleven, a public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised in Kettle Town Hall on December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, no members of the public submitted letters for or against the proposal, and the public hearing was closed on the same date. Section three, findings of fact and conclusions of law. Twelve, balancing test, in our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the area variance is granted as weighed against the detriment of health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. Section thirteen, consideration of the five factors in the balancing test. In our review of the variance sought and consideration of balancing, considering the benefit to the applicant as weighed against detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community, we have considered five factors required by section one-twenty-five dash one-twenty-five four C one of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law as follows. If the variance is granted, A, if the variance is granted, will it cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find the answer to this question is no. The proposed garage and cabana have low visibility from public roads or neighboring properties. The additions will enhance the property in terms of function and value, and to the extent the garage is used to house vehicles and gas power and landscaping equipment, these would be better protected from the elements, and any leaks of petroleum, antifreeze, or other such fluids would be more contained than is currently the case under the concept hut and shed. The design of the garage and cabana as described in the site plan dated September twelfth, twenty nineteen, advised on December tenth, twenty nineteen, are deemed to be in keeping with the character of the property and neighborhood. Second question, can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance, variance singular being sought? We find the answer to this question is no. For desired benefits, the proposal is reasonable, and new structures should be relatively isolated from neighboring views. Third question, is the request of area variance substantial? We find the answer to this question is yes. The area variance requested from additional two thousand three hundred forty-five feet of building footprint in excess of town code limits cannot be considered trivial, but relative to the size of the parcel, which is more than three times the size of minimum lot size in the RC five zoning district, and the isolated location, such significance is mitigated. Fourth question, will the proposed variance have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or districts? We find the answer to this question is no. Structures will be served by their own septic and well, and will not measurably affect views from neighboring properties. Cabana is located within a hundred-foot buffer of the federal wetlands. The applicant will be required to apply for a wetlands permit from the planning board for the structure. We defer to the planning board's review for any potential impact and mitigation for building within the wetland buffer. Two, three, four, five. Fifth question, is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. The applicant could forego building its proposed structures and use the property subject to existing conditions. Section fourteen, minimal variances requested. In addition to our review of the five factors in balancing test, we must also determine if the request of variance is considered the minimum necessary inadequate to accomplish what was requested by the applicant while also preserving and protecting the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We find the answer to this is yes. The size and design of the garage and accessory dwelling, cabana, are reasonable for the property, main residence, and existing conditions. Section fifteen, result of the balancing test. Based on our analysis of the five factors discussed above and consideration of having minimal variance requested, we find, we find that the balancing test favors granting of the variance sought. Now therefore be it resolved based on all of the facts described above, and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, Z B A hereby grants the variance from zoning law one-twenty-five, twenty-seven, A four, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. Our decision is supported by balancing of the five factors as discussed above. Section two, granting of the variance is expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the town of Rhinebeck, many and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application and full compliance with article fourteen, fee reimbursement of the town of Rhinebeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section three, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals, including site plan special use permit and wetlands permit from the Rhinebeck planning board, and approvals from the Dutch County Department of Health for the septic system. Proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application and plan submitted. Section four, the variance shall be null and void unless construction of the proposed structures is commenced within one year of this resolution. Section five, the variance shall be conditioned upon receipt by the applicant of a wetlands permit, site plan, and special use permit from the Rhinebeck planning board. Now therefore be resolved. Based on the facts and reasoning described above, the Z B A hereby grants the subject area variance requested subject to the stated conditions. The decision to grant this variance is supported by a balancing of the five factors discussed above. We find that the likely benefit to the applicant outweighs any potential detriment to the health, safety, property values, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. Motion to approve resolution.
Uh, one to...
Sorry?
I think I've been jarring, can you question this really quickly? I didn't hear lead agency in there, does the zoning board need to be lead agency? Because we're going building from the zoning board rather than planning board zoning board, or...
It's a type-two action.
For just the variance alone.
For the variance, it's a type-two action.
Okay, so that...
They might do it there. Again at the...
Okay, so by mentioning the type-two action and that SECRE was, you know, that was thought of, that was official, like, the zoning board against lead agency or anything, respect to that?
Yeah, and this is a, sort of, the, the, we've had, this is coordinated with the planning board already, and it's just the approach that we've agreed upon between the two boards.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, like, supposed to be in there, because we went a different route.
Yeah.
And so based on what Darren had just said, that you were going to be doing the pool accessory dwelling unit a little later, I would just add, so I don't want those approvals to be stopping you from moving forward with the garage.
Right, which is...
So I would recommend that at the end of section five, which is the variance is conditioned upon receipt of the applicant's wetlands permit, site plan, special use permit, I would just add, within one year, you should be able to get this, get it all figured, and get the approvals within a year, anything?
Yeah, well, the intent would be to submit a building for the application next week for the garage, and then submit to the planning board and consider the garage, you know, in existing building or under construction building, because that doesn't appear requiring from what I'm hoping to end the variance to do, right? So that would take it out of the planning board mix altogether, and then we got the year to work on the other structures and the other...
But you think that, the other, getting the pool and everything, you should get the permits within a year.
Absolutely, if that, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, for the question, and it's already before the county, so we're, we're starting the septic approval, but just our experience has been as close to a year, so hopefully the three months head start we have on...
So can, the variance shall be conditioned upon receipt within one year by the applicant of it? Yes?
Yes.
Section five.
That way the approvals themselves don't tie you up in getting this variance.
I had one quick question. Earlier when you were talking, did you say it was a two-bedroom structure, or one bedroom?
We, the client's one bedroom, it is, in fact, a one-bedroom.
Okay.
It's odd, because we've always done tubes, and these bigger ones just don't want too many, so I apologize for defaulting to...
Okay, no, I just wanted to correct that.
Yeah, it's absolutely a one-bedroom.
Okay. Motion to approve this resolution as amended.
Can I just ask one other question? So, this is related to the dialogue that just happened, so item number four on page one, should you be, I know that you used cabana as...
Yeah, I think more accurately you touched accessory dwelling, because there really is no cabana in the code. I, you know, the planning board has, has called and neutralized in that term in the past.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's better to say accessory dwelling rather than pool cabana.
Okay, we'll replace that universally throughout. Any other suggestions? Okay.
There's a missing something on the last page. Result, motion passes by the following margin, colon, blank.
Yeah, certain things get filled in here by Chris.
Five.
Okay, barring any other issues, motion to approve this resolution as amended, as discussed just now. Seconded by Catherine, Chris G. Paul.
Yes, Timothy Allenburg.
Aye.
Tim McEnopoli.
Aye.
Catherine Clark. Yes.
Aye. Any other business before we...
I just wanted to mention to Ken that you should change the template to add a "for" absence, since we had a board member absent tonight, but other than that, we don't have any more.
Okay, that's great, because then you get to propose a motion to adjourn the meeting at quarter of eight.
Mrs. Berger is going to be very jealous.
Yes, he will.
It's going to be a tough time to beat in the future.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the video.